Excellent, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Today is Monday, February 3, 2025. This is a uniquely scheduled meeting for the zoning board of appeals. This is not a functioning meeting this evening. We are not making any decisions. We are not here to discuss any pertinent or particular active or ongoing negotiations. This is strictly a training. We are going to only speak this evening in hypotheticals. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Everyone is going to have the opportunity to ask questions. Everybody's going to have the opportunity to provide input, but it will not be anywhere near any specifics to what we have going on because we have not called this for a decision-making meeting. This is strictly a training. So I just wanted to be clear before we begin. So with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to our duty expert and consultant. If you want to just go ahead and if you could please introduce yourself for us again.
I will do all of that.
And then I'm going to give the floor to you.
Okay. So I'm Judy Barrett from Barrett Planning Group, and I'm here actually at the town's request. I'm a consultant who does a lot of work for an organization called Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So MHP allows communities to request consulting support to work on these Chapter 40B developments, and that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I am assuming you have a complete package presentation.
I have a whole presentation. I am all set, but I didn't know if you wanted to say anymore.
No, I don't think, do we have anything that we'd like to begin with, board members? I think we're all set. We just want to get into the presentation.
Just the expectations. Is this about an hour?
Yes, sir. Have you had dinner yet?
Have you had dinner yet, Charles?
Dinner's not my issue.
Okay. So yeah, I yield the floor to you, ma'am. Please go right ahead. Thank you very much for being here, and thanks for you all for coming and participating in this, too.
So the only caveat I'll make is depending on the number of questions I get, that could make it run over a little bit.
Understood.
So I have put together a set of slides for all of you. This is not the first time I've done this type of training. I try to sort of tailor these a little bit to the particular community where I'm doing the training, but I'm going to go through for you kind of an overview of Chapter 40B, how it works, how it doesn't work, what the board's jurisdiction is, and so forth. And then the way this is set up, oh, good, I did advance, there are breaks in the presentation. And I think what I'd like to do is stop at those breaks and ask if anybody has any questions. Because sometimes what happens if people want to ask questions right away is that it's actually answered by a slide that's about six ahead.
Sure.
So if you could just bear with me, I'm going to take this in chunks, and I'll stop and say, does anybody have any questions? All right. So we'll look at Chapter 40B and what the law requires. There are state regulations that also apply that implement that law. I want to talk about how the permitting process works from kind of beginning to end, and then what happens after your board is done with your work. So people often think that Chapter 40B is the law that makes towns approve affordable housing. And the fact is, I just want you to understand that Chapter 40B is actually the regional planning law. It is the same statute that created Central Mass Planning Commission and every other RPA in Massachusetts. And there's a reason why this particular piece of the regional planning law exists. Regional planning law goes back to the early 1960s. In 1969, there may be some of you in this room as old as I am almost, who probably remember how tumultuous the 1960s were. And so there's a context for why this law passed when it did. But essentially, what the legislature did in 1969 was say, there are regional issues that exist when housing for lower moderate income people is concentrated in cities. So every community will have a regional fair share obligation to provide some affordable housing. That's why it's in the regional planning law, because it looks at regional need, which is one of the considerations the board has to vet when it's deciding whether to approve a project. It's not just local need, it's actually the regional need, which, as you will soon see, is defined by a particular percentage of units that you're supposed to have. It assumes if you have at least 10% of your housing stock that is deed restricted to be affordable to people who are lower moderate income, then you've met your burden. And you may continue to grant comprehensive permits, but you're not really required to. So as long as you're below that 10%, the developer kind of, I don't want to say has an upper hand, but it's a little easier for the applicant to get the approval that they're looking for. So there's a, it's just called the presumption of unmet need. And there are actually three provisions in the statute that govern this, but the one that's the most common and the one that applies in this case is this 10% rule. So if less than 10% of your housing is lower moderate income, as defined by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, then you are considered not to have met that burden. If you have 1.5% of your total land area occupied by lower moderate income housing, then you would be considered to have met that burden even if you weren't at 10%. So there's a land area requirement, and there's a percentage of units requirement. The reality is, the percentage of units requirement is the one that governs. So I just want you to know, there's a couple of different ways that boards could say, you know, we can deny you or not. And one of them has to do with how much land in your community is actually occupied by lower moderate income housing. You do not meet that standard, so don't even go there. But 10% is the more commonly understood requirement. So, you know, if you're below 10%, then the developer can apply for comprehensive permit, and they're presumed to need waivers of your local regulations. Because if they didn't need those waivers, they wouldn't be applying for a special permit, or a subdivision, or site plan review. But they can't get that approval because their project requires certain waivers of local regulations. Your jurisdiction is very kind of narrowly defined by a set of what are called local concerns in the statute. And the job of the Board of Appeals in these cases is to balance the regional need for housing against those local concerns that you are allowed to consider. And the law assumes that regional need is paramount if you are under 10%. So this is this balancing, I'm going to keep looking at the board, there's this balancing act that kind of the board has to do. And there are a lot of ways that town departments, town staff, and other boards and commissions can help the board in wrestling with this. But just understand that there's a high bar when the town is below 10%. So the management, managing of the hearing process and the review of the application is a challenge. So as I said, if you're above 10%, then you may still get a comprehensive permit application, but the board could deny it. The board could hold the applicant to the local regulations that would normally apply. So you don't necessarily stop 40Bs from coming through the door. You may be over 10%, and someone can still apply, but your standard of review is different. Under 10%, the regional need for housing is presumed to outweigh the local concerns. If you are over 10%, then the law assumes that the local concerns outweigh Twenty-five years ago, around 2000, the housing market finally recovered in Massachusetts from a recession that some of you might remember that goes back to 1989 to 91. And all of a sudden, we had a whole bunch of housing growth happening in Massachusetts, end of the 1990s. Well, Census 2000 came out, and it is the decennial census, the census that comes out every 10 years, that determines how that 10% is measured. Because it's a, you've got X number of affordable units, that's a percentage of something. It's a percentage of the total year-round housing units that the Census Bureau says you have. And that number lasts for 10 years. So you can end up over 10% in 1998. And then when the new census comes out, you are now below 10% because the denominator never changed. But meanwhile, you had market rate housing growth going on. So that's what happened. Housing growth took off, and communities said, wait a minute, you know, I had met my fair share. I was at 10%. This isn't fair. So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts said, all right, let's see if we can figure out ways to help communities buffer themselves from like a large project that perhaps they would not be accustomed to having to accommodate. And so through regulations, the state said, we're going to give you some carrots. One is, we're going to say, if you have a housing production plan, which your town does, and it's certified, you could deny a comprehensive permit as if you were over 10% for either a year or two. You have an approved housing plan, but not a certified one. The difference is, once you have that approved plan, are you creating new lower moderate income units under it? So you're not certified, but you're approved. In theory, a project like this would probably make you eligible for certification, just so you know. There is another standard called a recent progress threshold, where even if you don't have a housing production plan, if you're producing units, you know, pretty systematically, you're working toward 10%, you could get a break for a year. And the developers who do this know, like, they follow this stuff, so they know if you're really eligible for recent progress, they'll wait a year. But it's a buffer. There's also standards around the maximum size of a development that can come into a community based on the total housing stock that's in your town. And so that's typically capped at 300 units, except in very larger cities, it can go over that. But 300 is typically the maximum, the minimum for a very small town would be 150 units. So there are these things that were introduced in regulation to say, towns will work with you to manage 40B, but you do have to keep creating affordable units. If you do that, we'll give the Board of Appeals the ability to perhaps deny, at least on a temporary basis, so you can manage the impact of a number of applications coming through the door. People ask, what is affordable housing for purposes of Chapter 40B? Well, first and foremost, for state law purposes, it's anything that counts on the subsidized housing inventory. That is the official list the Commonwealth keeps that says, here are the deed restricted affordable units that exist in this town. So that's the standard. And so it's very important, if you're creating affordable housing through, you know, other means, maybe you have a housing trust that's helping a nonprofit developer create a unit or something like that, very, very important to make sure those units get on the inventory. It's housing that is affordable to households that are at or below what we call 80% of the median income. So it's not based on Auburn's median income, it's based on the Worcester area, again, because the law addresses regional need. How are those income limits determined? They are determined mainly by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, which publishes income limits for all the metro areas in the United States, as well as some rural areas as well. So right now, in Worcester County, this is sort of what it looks like. So a household of four, which I swear does not exist anymore, but we still talk about households of four as if they do, though a low income, the maximum income that would, that someone, a household could have to be eligible for a lower moderate income housing unit is $97,800. More typically, we see households of three, or sometimes even two. So you can see how those incomes kind of go down. They're tied to the household size, and it's a percentage of regional median income. So when a developer's going to build a Chapter 40B development, there's a process they have to go through to demonstrate that they are actually going to guarantee that people who are income-eligible will get those housing units. And I can talk about that a little bit later. But this is just sort of a picture of what the income limits are. And I often have people say, you know, that's not affordable. Nonetheless, this is what defines affordable housing for purposes of Chapter 40B. Stop here. Does anybody have a question about what I've said so far? Yes, go ahead.
Before I ask you, if I could, Adam, can I ask you a question, please? Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So why isn't our housing plan certified?
Because we have not met safe harbor. It is an approved plan by the state, but we need to be making affordable housing on a regular basis, and we have not done that.
And what do we need to do to meet it?
It's...
You've got to produce the units.
Right. I forget exactly how many. It's half, it's 1/2% or 1% of the total units per year, and we haven't produced any to count for safe harbor. The Albert Street project does not count towards safe harbor, and when they're built, they won't count towards safe harbor. They'll count towards the subsidized housing inventory, but not safe harbor.
Okay. Thank you very much. How often is the 10% calculated?
Every 10, well, in the course of a decade, when you add units, they are added to the inventory. So your percentage can go up. The problem is, like what happened in 1999 and 2000, when the new census came out in 20, it's 2002, I can still picture it, a lot of people, communities went down because their denominator increased. The growth that happened over the 1990s caught up with them.
I understand.
Yeah.
I have a more selfish reason for asking the question. So we have several projects ongoing right now.
Yes.
Although they don't have occupancy.
Right.
So is that the hinge pin, occupancy? So we can get a builder that can come in and continue to request while these units don't have occupancy?
So let me try to answer your question. Almost. Units are supposed to go on the subsidized housing inventory as soon as the comprehensive permit is final, which means when you file it with the town clerk. If there is not a building permit within 12 months, the units come off the subsidized housing inventory. They are restored when there is evidence that the units are actually viable. In other words, the standard is a certificate of occupancy. So you let the state know when there's a building permit finally, but they're not going to actually add the units until there are COs.
I'm sorry, I missed that last part. They're not going to add the units.
They won't actually add the units to the subsidized housing inventory until there's a certificate of occupancy.
Okay. So the occupancy permit is the hinge pin, which is why we're in the lurch now?
Yes.
For so many units being built.
Yes.
But not counting towards that 10%.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. The chart that you had, that you showed up there, was that units that would be being bought by somebody with that income levels?
It's either rent or ownership, it doesn't matter. It's, that's the maximum incomes a household can have to qualify to live in an affordable housing unit.
And what would be the guidelines for, excuse me, rental of those units?
It would be 30% of their gross monthly income. That's the standard for affordability, is 30%. And the same is true with the homeownership unit. 30% of gross monthly income is considered the maximum amount of housing cost that a lower moderate income household can afford.
I did see some other audience members might have some questions. So if you do, if you can come up here and sit if you'd like, one of the microphones, you can ask your questions, so we can record it. And if you could just introduce yourself, give us your name and address, that would be great, too. So if anybody has any questions of this particular segment before we move forward? Yes, sir?
John Regan, Six Cases Court. My question is, if we're required to provide 10% affordable units based on all the criteria, then why can't we make a development like the one on Vinyl Street that has 42 units, a certain percentage of that is affordable housing? We didn't do that. Why?
I think that the consultant can probably address your first question. The second part of the question about why we aren't doing it this way, I don't think I can really answer that, per se, but except for the fact that we only do what the applicant presents to us. It's not that we give them an option of A, B, and C.
Why can't we make applicants of a housing unit that big, 42 units, a certain percentage of 40B? Why can't we make that in the town zoning bylaws or the town bylaws? So anybody that's coming in and putting 42 units, you've got to give me four affordables. That's 10%.
I think that's something you'd have to probably propose a bylaw committee, and you'd have to go through and push through a bylaw to get that done if you wanted to.
You'd have to go to a town meeting.
It would go to a town meeting. That's not something you couldn't do, it's just something that we couldn't discuss really the principle of how to do it in this training would be for another time. But it's certainly something you could explore if you wanted to.
My other question was on affordability. Affordability is relative. I mean, a town in Shrewsbury, a town in Westboro, you're going to pay 1.5 times what you're paying in August. So even if you're 30% of the income, you're not going to be able to afford a house.
It's regional income. It's not tied to the locality, it's the regional income.
No, but the real estate isn't regional. The real estate's by the town.
I understand.
So if my home here is $500,000, for Shrewsbury, it's $750,000. Take 30% off of that, they still can't afford it.
So it's 30% of these income limits.
In Southbridge, it's 3.29. So regionally, that is all factored in. You're outweighing Shrewsbury's price with a price in Southbridge, or Westboro's price with a house in Webster.
You have to be 30% below the median income of the region.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so if I'm $70,000, median income's $100,000. I can't go to Shrewsbury and afford a low-income house at 30% below the rate if it's $750,000. It's only, what, 200 grand? I still can't afford a half a million dollar, I can't afford a half a million dollar house.
Can I respond to this?
Yeah, absolutely.
The affordable, maximum affordable purchase price, or the maximum affordable rent for an affordable unit in Shrewsbury is the same as it is here. So the market rate units may be very different, but the affordable price is going to be the same.
That's what I was confused about.
Okay, no problem, that's fine.
Anyone else?
I just have a question about the, back to the occupancy for one second. So on a bigger project, I'm not going to name any names on projects, but...
That's a good idea.
Let's just say, on a 200-unit project, and this might be getting a little technical, but obviously occupancy certificates are not issued on the same day for 200 units. That's not how it works.
Right.
One building goes live, there's, let's say, 50 units in it. Do we get, we only get, if the first building goes live and 50 COs are issued, we get 50 units on the list? And as they're...
As more COs are issued, then you can ask the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to add them.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, once the first one, we don't get the credit for all of them.
No, you don't. You don't.
Just a quick follow-on.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may for that, just a quick follow-on for that. So when the occupancy permits are issued, and that gets added, who holds the key to essentially calculating that percentage? Does that percentage immediately get calculated by the state? So if we add 50 units or 100 units on occupancy, how quickly does that translate to moving that number?
So if you have a building, a building under construction for 100 units, and 25% of those have to be affordable, and you can demonstrate that there's a certificate of occupancy for that 100-unit building, then the units will be added at that point.
Okay, but when does the number actually change, though? Does that have to go to Boston, and then somebody waits to calculate it, and then sends it back and says, now you're at 9.5%? I mean, when, or can somebody send an email, and that can happen in 20 minutes? How long do we wait to find out that we're over a 10% threshold?
The decision would be retroactive to the date that the evidence was submitted, is the way it's typically, I've seen it done. So if you had sufficient COs for 50 units, then those 50 units would be added.
Okay, so it really does hinge on a date of occupancy issue?
Yes, it does. Yeah, I mean, part of the frustration for communities is that, again, when you issue the comprehensive permit, those units all go on the inventory right away. But if they're not under construction within 12 months, they come off. So if you have a 100-unit rental development, not to complicate things, but it's not 25 units that go on the inventory, it's 100, because it's a rental project. If that building isn't under construction within a year, those units all come off. And then, once it is, once you've got COs, they're added like pro rata. So it takes longer to get the units on the inventory than it did when you originally issued the permit. Does that make sense? I mean, it doesn't, don't answer if it makes sense, but do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. No, I appreciate the explanation. I mean, because when I think about who might have spent the time to sit back and write that, and actually put that provision in, it's essentially a way to penalize somebody for dragging it out.
Yeah. I mean, it was, there was a case in, I think it was Hudson, a few years back, where the town was eligible for safe harbor because they had issued a, you know, they'd approved a certain number of units under their approved housing plan. And they didn't submit the request right away. Just, you know, paperwork, town staff get busy or whatever. They didn't go in right away. And meanwhile, a developer came in and applied for a comprehensive permit. And so the town tried to make the case that we're actually eligible back to the date that the permit was issued, but because they didn't request it, the applicant had no way to know that that requirement would have blocked them from applying.
So it wasn't recorded, basically?
What you do is you just get on it right away, I think is what I'm trying to say.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's the best you can do. Why don't I keep going? So project eligibility, I know you're kind of, you've all heard this term, but I just want you to understand what this is and how it works. Because of a series of Supreme Judicial Court cases, the state overhauled their Chapter 40B regulations in 2007 and 2008. And one of the things that they did at that time was to say, the sort of, the statutory basic requirements for eligibility to apply are going to be handled by a subsidizing agency for the Commonwealth, which typically is Mass Housing, which is the one I think you typically hear from, or the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, or Mass Development, or Mass Housing Partnership. Those are typically the ones that issue project eligibility letters. And the intent was to sort of make sure that there was, somebody was screening these projects before they came to the ZBA. So the applicant, before they can even get to you, they have to go to one of those housing subsidizing agencies and file an application to essentially be pre-qualified to apply. There is a notification to the town, which I think is happening right now on another project. There is a site visit by a representative of that agency, whoever it is. Typically, in the review process... Typically, in the review process for the project eligibility application, the subsidizing agency will commission an appraisal to determine the as-of-right value of the land. And then there are certain standards of review that are supposed to govern how the housing subsidizing agency reaches a decision. Do I give this developer a project eligibility letter or do I not? It's important to understand these agencies are not permitting authorities. They are not issuing permits. That's your job. All of these agencies have a sense of mission to create housing for lower moderate income people. Like it or not, that's their mission. So it is very unlikely that they will stand in the way of issuing what we now call PEL. I'm gonna start defaulting to acronyms and I apologize. It's not, it's not common for PELs to be denied because the feeling is, if there are issues with the project, that's for the permitting authorities to figure out. We're simply gonna look at it as a subsidizing agency for the narrow window that governs our review. That PEL, project eligibility letter, is critically important to a developer because without it, they can't come to the Board of Appeals. Can't. So that PEL either opens a door or the denial of the PEL closes it. When the subsidizing agency reviews these applications, there are specific criteria in the regulations they have to consider. One is, is this project eligible under our program guidelines? Whatever the subsidizing agency's guidelines are, and they're not quite the same. The agencies all sort of serve somewhat different populations. They are involved in financing in different ways. So given what our program guidelines are, would we fund this project? Is the site generally appropriate for residential development? That's one that tends to sometimes drive local officials crazy, especially if something comes in on industrial land or whatever. Well, the statute doesn't care how it's zoned. Really, the standard is, could you build something on this property? They're not gonna decide whether 150 units, if that's what the applicant's asking for. They're not gonna decide if 150 units are appropriate. They're simply gonna say, is this location appropriate for residential development? They will give a general pass for the proposed project. They are going to get a concept plan. They're gonna get conceptual, what we call elevations, you know, building drawings. And they'll say, they'll look at the site, they'll look at the project. They'll say generally appropriate. It's kind of a squishy standard, but that's what the regulations call for. They are obligated to sort of give a smell test for, is this project, do we think this thing is feasible? If they actually get approved by the ZBA, can they actually build this project? Is it economically feasible? Does it look like it's physically feasible? And then there's a question of, is the applicant eligible? Get to that in a minute. Because not everybody can apply to the Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit. There are certain eligible applicants. So the subsidizing agency has to make that determination. And then, does the applicant have site control? Well, if the applicant owns the property, that's easy. But typically, it's a purchase and sale agreement. So the subsidizing agency goes, gives a pass to these review criteria. And if the applicant satisfies them, then the PEL will be approved. There are local responsibilities that apply during the PEL process. And I know you have gone through this before, but first of all, the subsidizing agency wants to come out and do a site visit. They wanna see the property because it's kind of hard to say the site is appropriate if you haven't seen it. There is a comment period. Typically, it's 30 days. Typically, if the town is working on comments and they need a couple of extra weeks, if they request it, typically it will be granted. Not always, but typically. There is typically a, or often encouraged for the developer to meet with at least town staff and find out like, what are the, you know, what are gonna be the deal breakers on this project? Boards with development, boards that would normally have jurisdiction, planning board, conservation commission, board of health, whoever, should be asked, and usually are asked, to look at the project and kind of provide some comments and to focus their comments on the standards of review. Because if you start talking about things that the subsidizing agency can't consider or that the Board of Appeals can't consider, you're not gonna get heard. So there are certain things that you can consider, and it's those previous criteria I mentioned. Site generally appropriate, project generally appropriate. Is it feasible? Would we fund it? Does the applicant have site control? I mean, those are the things that the project eligibility process is allowed to consider. And then ultimately, the select board will transmit a set of comments that have been contributed to jointly by the various other boards that normally would have jurisdiction over the project. And at that point, the subsidizing agency has to make a decision. Are we gonna approve this? Are we gonna issue a project eligibility letter or not? As frustrating as it sometimes is for municipalities who are looking at what's probably a problem site, probably a site that would not normally be built because if it could be built through an easier means, believe me, a developer would rather not do a 40B. They really would rather not do a 40B. It is a bureaucratic nightmare. You know, it's probably not the best site in the world, so there tend to be issues. And communities will look at this and say, how could you possibly approve a project eligibility letter for this site? And the position, as I said, of the subsidizing agency is, our goal is to get housing built. The issues you're raising are permitting issues. It's up to the Board of Appeals. Any questions about that? Okay. So there are big differences that I think you probably are aware of. When the application now comes to you, rental projects by state policy, this is not in the statute. It is not in the regulations. It's really important to understand this because it could change. But by state policy, if it's a rental development, all the units will count on the subsidized housing inventory. So if I have 100-unit development, 25 are affordable. So I've met the minimum percentage requirement. All those units will go on the subsidized housing inventory. If it's a homeownership development, only the affordable units go on. So rental gets you closer to 10% faster. You know, it's also a bit of a misnomer because 75% of the units are actually not affordable. But that's a state policy and it is being reviewed. I don't know where that's going to go, but there's been quite a bit of discussion about that policy, which has been on the books, gosh, at least 35 years that I know of. I am that old. It's not up to the board to decide whether it's going to be a rental project. It's up to the applicant. And actually, the application for project eligibility letter goes in two different directions depending upon what the developer's proposing to do. If it's a rental development, it gets reviewed for, under a certain number, certain types of financial feasibility criteria. If it's homeownership, it's different. So the Board of Appeals has a really difficult job in these cases because unlike their normal workload, they're going, they get hit with an application that involves matters of review that they typically don't look at, that maybe the planning board or somebody else looks at. What the law assumes is that if they're less than 10%, there is an unmet regional need for housing that you need to contribute to. And therefore, and if the applicant could comply, if they could actually build the housing that's needed, they would not do it through this process. That's sort of the fundamental premise. So the Board of Appeals ends up having to consider these other things that normally they never look at. It's zoning, it's subdivision control, it's a local wetlands bylaw. It's a historic district, if there is one. It's a scenic roads bylaw, if there is one. You know, any of those matters that would typically go to some other board for any other project, all of it lands here. And the board has to weigh those factors with its jurisdiction somewhat limited because it's hard to deny a comprehensive permit and expect to be able to prevail. There are things that are not within the board's purview. And I always feel compelled to explain this to people because if you go down these paths, it's not gonna get you anywhere. Typically, things come up like impact on schools. It's not gonna get you anywhere. It's not in their jurisdiction. Fiscal impact studies. What's this gonna cost us in terms of taxes? Not in their jurisdiction. How are the tenants gonna be picked? Not in their jurisdiction. How are we gonna make sure the developer's complying with the profit limitations that apply to a 40B development? Not in their jurisdiction. I wanna see a market study. I don't know if this is feasible. Not in their jurisdiction. So focus on the things that the Board of Appeals can consider, which is essentially public health, public safety, environmental impact, and building and site design. That is really the box. The applicant has to show in coming to the Board of Appeals that they are either a public agency, like a housing authority, or a nonprofit organization, or what's called a limited dividend organization, which is typically what we see in most 40Bs. That it's a for-profit developer who will agree to limit their profits in order to enjoy the benefits of the additional density and waivers that come with a 40B development. So they have to agree to a profit limitation that is based on what the subsidizing agency's requirements or policies are. They have to show that they have site control and they have to have that PEL. When the state regulations were changed in 2007 and 2008, these factors were brought under the umbrella of the subsidizing agency. So that's why when the applicant goes for a project eligibility letter, they have to say, yeah, I own the property. Or, yeah, I've got a, I've got a purchase and sale agreement. Yes, I will enter into a limited dividend agreement. And I need this, I need this letter. I gotta show that I'm actually approved by a housing subsidizing agency. So these are like critical requirements. Every time you got a comprehensive permit, you review for these. But just so you know, the expectation is that during the PEL process, the subsidizing agency will take care of these things. But that doesn't rob you of your jurisdiction. Part of what makes reviewing a 40B challenging is that the level of detail in the plans submitted is not the same as what a planning board might see in a site plan review application or a special permit. They are preliminary plans. They have to be sufficiently detailed that the board can tell what's going to, what's being proposed, how much is being proposed, is it feasible to build this project? But they're not detailed plans. That comes later with the building permit. They have to show, these are standard things. An existing conditions plan, like what's the situation on the site? Is it vacant land? Are there buildings on it? You know, what's the topography? What's the wetlands? They have to submit a tabulation of how many buildings by type and how much ground coverage is involved. There's another state regulation that kind of makes that ground coverage calculation important. But for our purposes here, there are certain things that have to be on these plans. If the project requires a subdivision, then part of their application to the Board of Appeals is a preliminary subdivision plan. Boards of Appeal don't do subdivisions. Planning boards do. So this is like a really tough job that the board has. The applicant has to show how they're going to get utilities on the site. Not necessarily detailed plans such as what perhaps the water or sewer department would require, but they have to be able to show they can actually get water there or they can get sewer service there. And then the list of requested waivers. Those things that would otherwise stop the applicant from building the project if the applicant had to comply with all your local requirements. Those are the basic filing requirements for any 40B. You can't read this. You don't need to. I'll just simply tell you. It's in the book, the 40B handbook. I put this slide up even though I know people can't read it because I think you can probably see at least the large numbers. If you see the large numbers, you can follow what I'm gonna say. When you get a comprehensive permit application, do not wait, do not wait for the weekend. If the application comes in on Friday, get it out the door to the other people who are going to review it. Your town staff, your planning board, your conservation commission, whomever. Get it out the door so that the review process can start. You have to advertise a public hearing, just as you would for a special permit, 14 days before the hearing date, you know, twice. And then you must open the hearing in 30 days. So any of you who've been on a planning board who may have dealt with special permits, you know typically you have 65 days to open the hearing. You don't have that with 40B. It's, you got 30 days to open the hearing. Even if you think the application's incomplete, you still open the hearing because 30 days is in the statute. And if you miss that, the applicant will be eligible for what's called constructive approval, which means they're just gonna get a yes. So never wait. Get the application out the door, advertise the hearing, and open it within 30 days. And if the application isn't complete, you take that up with the applicant, you know, at the hearing. If you think you have the right to turn down that application because you meet a safe harbor, say you think you're over 10%, or you've created enough units that you're eligible to have your housing plan certified. If you think you meet one of those, you have to tell the applicant within 15 days of opening the hearing, we think we can turn you down because we think we've got safe harbor. The applicant then can say, well, I don't agree with you, so I'm gonna appeal to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They then get involved and they look at it and typically will, more often than not, will agree with the developer. And then, so the town's unhappy. So the town can then ask a higher authority to review it, and it all sort of drags on. Assuming none of that happens, basically you got 180 days from the day you open the hearing to bring it to closure, unless the applicant agrees to an extension for some reason. And typically, if it's a modest extension, they'll agree to it. But, you know, you don't have 360 days to do this hearing. You have to assume, I got 180 days. So planning the hearing process is really important because you just can't, you can't wait forever to figure out, when are we gonna look at traffic? When are we gonna look at stormwater? When are we gonna look at wetlands? You have to have all of that really scheduled out very tightly. And if you do, it makes the hearing process go a little easier. Once the hearing closes, the board has 40 days to make a decision. They have to file it with the town clerk within 14 days. And then there's a 20-day appeal period. So if the applicant's not happy, the applicant's going to go to a state entity called the Housing Appeals Committee. And if it's in a butter or some other interested party, they go to a court of competent jurisdiction, which would typically be the land court or a superior court. The public hearing process can be tough for the board because often there are a lot of emotions involved. The fact is that for the board to grant a, to make a decision that they have a likelihood of being able to uphold, at least in part, they have to focus on evidence. They have to focus on fact-based evidence, which is why having professional help from engineers, others, is just so important. You conduct the hearing, you know, the same as any other kind of hearing process. There's a typical protocol for it. You can't treat a 40B differently from any other type of development coming into your town. You can't impose something on a 40B that you wouldn't impose on another type of development. The town departments and boards have a technical review role to advise the ZBA. Those boards, as I mentioned before, planning, conservation, and so forth. The water district in this case. Being able to advise the board, police, fire, building inspector, their testimony is critical. But in particular, the testimony of an independent consultant hired by the board with money that the applicant has to provide to the town, but the board picks its consultant. That party is key because that party's going to have a level of credibility in an appeal that will be, it will be respected. I said this before, I'll say it again. Focus on issues that are within the board's jurisdiction. Focus on getting documentation for the concerns that you have. You're allowed to have what's called a work session with a developer, so not to skirt the public hearing process. But if there were some really sort of nitty-gritty technical things that the board wanted to kind of have worked out so that the applicant could come back and say, well, we've resolved, you know, eight out of 10 things. You can have what's called a work session. So maybe the chairman of the board might go, or maybe you leave it to staff or whatever. But people sit down and they try to work out technical matters with the project. You've gotta have the waiver list reviewed. As I said earlier, the applicant is presumed to be eligible for certain waivers. It should be approved. It should be reviewed. They don't necessarily get every waiver they ask for. Sometimes they ask for waivers that they don't even need. So reviewing that waiver list is really important to make sure that, you know, they're just not asking for you to waive the word. And then, I know this is easier for some towns than others, but the more you can kind of use your website to get public information out there for people, the easier it makes it for the board. You don't end up with people coming to a meeting saying, I haven't seen this document or whatever. You get to hire a consultant. It's at the applicant's expense. All written results from that consultant are part of the record. It becomes part of that basis for the balancing test that I referred to earlier, regional need versus local concerns. You need to focus, if you're gonna try to make this process successful for you, I'm worried about you guys, right? I'm here for you. You know, you gotta, the more you focus on real issues and stay out of stuff that is just not in your jurisdiction or you're not gonna be able to touch, the better off you're gonna be. The sooner you're gonna identify major issues, the better because you've got 180 days to work with. So it's not helpful to be identifying critical issues four months into the... four months into the process. You can request additional information from the applicant if you need it. It's got to be within reason. But there's nothing wrong with saying, "I don't think your application provides, you know, this particular information that we need." It's helpful if the peer review consultant that you hire backs you up on that. If you can't, kind of, if you're having trouble perceiving what the project's going to look like, sometimes boards will ask for some additional graphics, maybe a perspective drawing on a building instead of just, you know, straight front elevations. But the important thing is to stay in your lane. And it's hard for the public to get that because people are angry about the project. They don't want the project. And that is just the way it is with 40B. But you need to stay in your lane. Just focus on what you're allowed to focus on. People often bring up, "Well, how do we know that the developer's not going to make a killing?" If you ask the applicant to make a concession, something you want them to do that is not part of their application, maybe a waiver you don't want to grant. And the applicant says, "I can't do that because that's going to kill my project financially." At that point, the board can say, "Prove it." And the applicant then has to submit a pro forma showing the impact of what the board is asking you to do. You don't review a pro forma unless that happens. Otherwise, it's just, it's irrelevant. But if you're asking the applicant to do something, and the applicant says, "I can't do that," then the applicant has to provide you with a pro forma, kind of showing their point, and you have the right to hire a peer review consultant to review that. The problem is that sometimes we don't get to that point in these projects until four months into the permitting process. And it's kind of too late to hire a consultant. So something else to think about for the future is maybe getting a peer review consultant for pro forma on board soon. So that if you need them, fine. If you don't, that's fine, too. I already explained this. I don't need to go over it. I will just say this, though. If you're going to avoid a pro forma dispute, I would do it. Though, let me tell you why. This came up in another town I worked in. So say you say, "I don't agree with you. We think that what we don't want to grant for waiver is not going to make your project uneconomic." And the developer says, "Oh, yes, it will." And then you go out and hire a peer review consultant. If that peer review consultant comes back and says, "You know what, board, actually, the developer's right." You've just lost your leverage. So the ability to negotiate with these people is really critical. I just can't emphasize this enough. Negotiation in 40B is critical. Your job ultimately is to balance these regional needs for housing against local concerns. So these are the local concerns. I already kind of summarized these for you. It's public health, public safety. Those are paramount. Environmental impact is paramount. Building and site design, open space. It does not mean that you want to keep the land as open space. What it does mean is, you know, is there reasonable space in the project for perhaps someone to be outside, who's going to live in the development? The statute allows you to consider planning, but it's a very narrow standard. So I really just say to boards normally, public health, public safety, environmental impact, building and site design, those are things you can actually regulate. You have three choices. You either approve, as submitted, or you approve with conditions, which is typical, or you deny. There's a huge difference between a denial and approval with conditions. A denial is presumed to... As soon as the developer goes to the Housing Appeals Committee and says, "They denied me," the entire burden is on you to show that that decision was reasonable. And it's a high bar. If you approve the project with conditions, it's more likely that you might be able to sustain some of them. I'm not saying you should approve the project. I'm saying, just understand strategically. It's a little easier to get somewhere with an approval with conditions than it is an outright denial. The applicant can go to the Housing Appeals Committee if he or she is upset. Everybody else goes to court. I need my water, excuse me. This chart just lays out for you a summary of what I already said. It's who does what. Subsidizing agency issues a project eligibility letter. The select board has 30 days to comment. You know, town departments get involved. Select board sends comments to the subsidizing agency. Town departments then comment on that application when it comes to the ZBA. And the ZBA has to conduct this balancing test of weighing regional housing need against local concerns. Any questions? Yes? I'm taking my water with me.
John Danilo, it's from the planning board. Is there a way to take into account prior performance or track record of the developer with other projects? And if so, how do you do that?
I have not seen that done successfully. I understand the question. It has come up in other towns I work in. I think the preferred way to deal with that is probably during the project eligibility process because once the developer has the PEL, they're presumed to be eligible to be here. It's not uncommon for that to be a concern with 40B developments. But I think the place to start is, is this applicant actually eligible to do this? Yeah, go right ahead.
So just a follow-up then. In the review process prior to the issuance of the project eligibility letter, do towns at that point engage consultants to help them kind of putting together their package to go into that process?
I mean, some towns do. Some towns rely on their town staff. The difference between this process and the PEL is in this process, the developer has to pay for the consultant. Whereas if you're trying to do this in the PEL phase, the town is responsible for paying for it. But that is something that I would say, if you have concerns about a proponent based on past performance, I would definitely bring that to the subsidizing agency's attention. What they'll do with it, I don't know. But it's probably good to have it on the record. Anybody else have a question?
Could you just comment? And maybe you can't, but again, without any specific project. We've had a couple of these in front of us now, and there is always comments, sometimes from the board and almost always from the general public, on why aren't we reducing the amount of units that has been asked for? So is that something that you can comment on? I know that would be, you know, if we approved with a condition, but instead of 300 units, we'll approve 200 units. I just, I think that comes up a lot. And I think we get a lot of pushback from why we are not.
Right.
So can you just speak to that?
I can. That's an example of where a pro forma review would be necessary. Because you can't just do that. I mean, you've got to have public health, public safety, environmental impact, you know, those criteria to consider. It's this balancing thing of how important are the local concerns versus the regional need? Regional need, when you're under 10%, is the driving factor in the decision. So if you're going to require, if you're going to deny a waiver of a local regulation, which is what you would be doing if you imposed, you know, some lesser standard on the applicant for a number of units, if you're going to do that, you need to know that the likelihood is you're going to get sustained if there's an appeal.
Can I piggyback off of that and ask?
Sure.
The next part of it would be, if we are at safe harbor, can we limit the number of units? So if we are at our 10% and somebody comes in and says they want to do 300, can we say, "We're only going to limit the particular number"?
If you are, if your subsidized housing inventory exceeds 10%, your whole position changes.
Understood, okay.
Local concerns can be deemed to outweigh regional need because you will have been deemed to have met your regional fair share.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Roche, thanks for asking that question because I actually wrote down when we were going over the pro forma, what's our risk in trying to use a pro forma to force, I mean, someone comes in at 190 or 150, tell them that they can have two buildings and they can have 60 units and use a pro forma? But you're saying the likelihood is that we wouldn't be successful?
I think it's a low probability.
Because?
Because...
Because of sheer inventory in the region?
No. The issue of the economics is, can the developer build this project with fewer units? Is it economic, is it financially feasible for the developer to build a project on this site with fewer units? That's the question for the pro forma review.
But we wouldn't know that unless he was willing to give that up.
Well, I mean, in the pro forma process, you would be asking the developer to reduce the number of units. The developer says, "I can't do that." That's when you get a pro forma review. Because otherwise, you have nothing to stand on. You may say, "Well, we want you to reduce the number of units." I'm not saying you can't ask for that, but just know the risk you're taking. That if you don't have some basis and feasibility to say, "We can knock this project down to X units and we're going to be probably upheld," you're really asking for the Housing Appeals Committee to take over your permitting process. And that's one of the great risks I think people need to understand with 40B is that if the applicant goes to the Housing Appeals Committee, the whole permit can be opened up. And to the extent that you can avoid that, it's probably advisable because I don't think you want a state agency in Boston deciding on your permit decisions. Pardon the redundancy. But that's the challenge you've got.
So under what grounds would a pro forma be successful?
If the applicant can build the project and still make a reasonable profit, that would be economically feasible.
So the premise of my question was, how do we come up with that information? How do we determine that?
You would have to say to the applicant, "I think you can build this at 100 units instead of 150." The applicant says, "I can't do that." That's when you hire a pro... The developer then has to say, you say to the developer, "Prove it to us." The developer comes in with a pro forma that says, "At 150 units, I was barely feasible. Now I'm down to 100. I can't build this." Your peer review consultant reviews it and says, "The applicant's right or wrong."
Let me ask it a different way with respect. So what I'm saying is, how do I find that information out before I get on that road? On the numbers? If we can't, it's always going to be a risk?
They don't have to give that.
So they don't have to give that financial impact information to us upfront?
So their application should consider, should include the pro forma that they submitted to Mass Housing or whoever the subsidizing agency was. They have to provide a pro forma to the subsidizing agency that says, "Here's what I'm saying I'm going to build, and here's how much money I'm going to make." And if it's within the ratios that are permitted...
So we have something. All right. So we have something on a boilerplate that he submitted initially.
You have that. But now the question is, if you want them to change their project, then you need a pro forma that shows the impact of that.
Understood.
Right.
There's still a negligible risk, but we're starting with a number versus starting absence of a number and begging him to give us information. Okay. Thank you.
Quick question based off that. I just want to clarify. So part of the problem with the pro forma, the reason you're risking it or cautioning against it is pretty much if they come back and say it's unfeasible and our peer review expert says it's unreasonable, we're giving them the golden ticket, right? Like, they go to Mass Housing and show, "Look, everything shows that it's unreasonable."
Appeals Committee. That's the challenge with the pro forma review. I can just tell you, that's the risk you're taking. And it's a risk you can take. I mean, boards do this, but just know, you might get, a consultant might come back and say, "You know, you're right." Or a consultant might say, "Well, they can't reduce 50 units, but they probably could get rid of 20." But if they come back and say, "It's just not feasible. Here's what the land acquisition cost is. Here's what their financing costs are, yada, yada, yada," then they're going to say it's not feasible to comply with what the board is asking the applicant to do.
Is reasonable profit defined by the statute or a state agency across the board?
It's state policy.
I'm hearing to say no, but...
It's policies. It's all state policy. The statute doesn't define any of this. The statute doesn't even define lower moderate income. Pretty interesting, but...
Can I just go back just to the beginning? And just to define, who is the subsidizing agency? I keep hearing that name. What is that, please?
It is usually Mass Housing. They are the largest of the housing agencies in terms of financing. It is sometimes the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. If it's a tax credits project, then EO HLC will be the subsidizing agency.
So are they subsidizing in terms of tax incentive financing? Are they financing it? Are they providing, are this grants to do these projects?
It all depends on the project. It all depends on the program.
But it is public funds going to this project to be constructed as well?
Or private financing that is regulated by a public agency.
Private financing that's regulated by a public agency?
That satisfies the regulations of the agency, yeah.
Right. So, yeah, it's basically a subsidized financing rather than the type of thing is more or less...
Favorable financing.
There's a different source of financing available, I suppose, right?
There could be a different source of financing, but the subsidizing agency has to satisfy itself is that this project, the developer can build this project with whatever the financing source is and make a reasonable profit so the project doesn't go belly up.
Sure. Okay, yeah.
That's what they're doing.
Yep, okay. I just want to make sure I understood. And for the folks at home, I keep hearing subsidized agency, and I want to make sure it's clear what that was.
I mean, there are programs that are subsidized, true subsidies. I mean, there are programs that are subsidized, true subsidies. Tax credits is an example. But a lot of these projects are not like that. They're coming through the Mass Housing process. I swear to God, I'm going to finish this soon. So let me just finish this up. I don't have much else to say. So after this is done, after you guys are done, the applicant still has to go through another process, which can sometimes delay the building permit. They have to go back to the subsidizing agency and file for what's called final approval. And that's when the subsidizing agency really drills down on these projects. The PEL is sort of a pass to go to the Board of Appeals. But the subsidizing agency really has an interest in making sure that the project doesn't fall apart. So there's a much more in-depth review that happens after the applicant gets their comprehensive permit. There's a whole process, depending on the agency, that governs how outreach is done to lower moderate income households about the availability of units. There is a limited dividend restriction that has to be executed. There is a final cost certification that is intended to show the developer did not exceed their profit limitation. On your end, eventually, the developer will come back and apply for a building permit. And there are a variety of things that the developer's going to have to provide at that point that were not provided to the Board of Appeals. So one of the things we have to do is make sure the permit is written in a way that covers the building inspector to say, wait a minute, I can't give you a building permit until you give me X, Y, and Z. Inspections during construction. You can review the final cost certification, but you don't have authority to approve or disapprove it. You know, if the permit lapses, then the developer has to come back and apply all over again, which they never want to try to do that. You can be, you have a right to be notified that a comprehensive permit's being transferred, but you don't get a yes or no over it. It's a subsidizing agency that does that. More often than not, I have seen applicants come back to the Board of Appeals later and say, gosh, golly gee, we actually did more detailed engineering. And actually, this project, we need more waivers. So they have to come back and request a modification to their comprehensive permit. It is remarkably common how often this happens. Just very briefly on these viewpoints, because these sometimes come up, so I just want to cover them briefly. There are questions that sometimes come up in these comprehensive permit processes about why towns have to do certain things. And it all comes down to really civil rights. So I want to just briefly take a look at those. First of all, to count on the subsidized housing inventory, units have to be made available to any eligible lower moderate income person in a pretty large area. Usually, the area that is used to set the income limits. So if it's Worcester County, it's, there's outreach that has to happen kind of throughout the county. The housing has to be affordable at a sale or rent price that is approved by the state agency and is in the affirmative fair housing, what we call the affirmative fair housing marketing plan. You guys don't have to worry about this, but I want you to know what goes on. You are allowed to request some local preference. You may request that the subsidizing agency that's going to approve the housing, the tenant selection plan, that you would like at least up to 70% of the affordable units reserved, first of all, for people who have some connection to Auburn. You can request that. You're not guaranteed it, but, you know, more often than not, if you can kind of make a reasonable case, they'll allow it. It doesn't mean that all 70% of those units are going to go to local people, but it does mean there's a preference in the tenant selection process, or the lottery process. So back to this point about regional need and regional disparity, and how this all sort of came about. Chapter 40B functions as a check on local requirements that make affordable housing infeasible to build. So if you have a height limit that makes it infeasible to build a multifamily building, that would be presumed to be something that is an eligible waiver to request. Massachusetts has implemented some additional requirements for 40Bs that are intended to pursue the purpose of the law, but specifically around fair housing concerns. One is that if you have a so-called friendly 40B that you want to do, that's going to be for seniors, you cannot require everybody in the development to be 55 or over. I actually was 55 when I had an 18-year-old child. And so I was, in theory, age-eligible to live in the development, but because I had a child under 18, I would have been disqualified. You can't do that. It's, the Housing for Older Persons Act, under federal law, addresses at least one person in the household must be 55 or over. So there are limits on how draconian you can be when it comes to placing restrictions on who's eligible to live in a housing unit. So just be aware of that. That at least 10% of the units in any 40B development today must have three bedrooms. And this is because for decades, projects were being approved with restrictions on bedrooms, which is a problem under the Civil Rights Act and cannot do it. So to sort of stop that from happening, the state policy was just adopted across the board, at least 10% of units in a 40B development must be appropriate for families. Those are kind of the two things I wanted to just touch on, was age restrictions and families eligibility. And beyond that, I can answer any other questions you guys have. Because I'm done.
At the risk of holding us for a few minutes, I just, I want to circle back to two things, but one relative to a previous slide, to the age slide.
Yeah.
You mentioned height restriction.
Yeah.
Can you repeat that, please?
If the allowable height under your zoning would not allow a multifamily building to be built, you will, I should not say, I shouldn't be this definitive, but I'm going to be, you will not be able to sustain denying that waiver.
Why?
Because you're below 10%, and there's a presumed regional need for affordable housing, and the applicant is proposing to build multifamily housing.
So they have an opportunity to basically scrap our bylaws?
What waivers do they need to build the development they're proposing to build? That's the question. And I'm not saying you have to grant every waiver. I'm just saying that some waivers, you're not going to be able to sustain.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate your candor. I want to circle back to a good question that was raised earlier about perhaps reputation of a builder, and their, and the way they conduct themselves. So if that's known, but the subsidizing agency, when they go through that process, does the town even know about it?
Yes. The select board gets a notice within 10 days.
Our board doesn't know yet. But the town knows that they're going through a process.
So let me tell you how it's supposed to work. When Mass Housing, or any subsidizing agency, gets an application from project eligibility, they are supposed to notify the town right away, and it's done by notifying the select And you have 30 days to comment. And, you know, as I said earlier, you could probably request a little more time if it's reasonable, but you have 30 days to comment. Subsidizing agency comes out and does a site visit. And that's at the point where if you have real concerns about the ability of the proponent to perform, I would get that in writing to the subsidizing agency.
Okay, but that would have to happen at a point in time when the zoning board doesn't know about it, right?
That's correct.
But the town knows about it through the planning board?
Select board.
Excuse me, select board. So the select board knows about it at that point, but we don't know about it?
Well, you actually shouldn't know about it, because you don't have an application in front of you.
No, good point. Yeah, no, I agree with you. So then that would have to rely on, the select board would have to understand the reputation of that builder at that time.
So back to what I had mentioned earlier about how that process should work, as soon as the select board is told, guess what, there's a 40B application coming through the door, if someone's applied for project eligibility, I would ask the select board to just let everybody know, like, let the planning board know, let the Conservation Commission, let people know, because they're going to have some potential concerns about the project that probably should be documented at that point. So I would never expect the select board to figure all that out, but what they can do that's really important is letting other boards know, or town staff, this is coming through the door. Here's, you know, here's the application. Do you have comments? And if you can get all those comments kind of organized to go back to the subsidizing agency under a single cover letter from the select board, it just makes everything much more organized.
Excuse me. When, when the site is reviewed, is there a report made?
By the subsidizing agency? You mean, when, I mean, as part of the coming out to do a site visit?
Right.
There's no formal report. They come out and look at the site. Their obligation is to make findings under the regulations, and their PEL will list that those findings were made, but there's no actual report.
So there's no site report whatsoever?
Not that I've ever seen.
Thank you.
Could I ask, so, and I'm trying to put this out for maybe some of the audience that may have overlooked this. If I am a concerned citizen here, and I have some of the questions that are not addressable by the zoning board, number of students that are going to be imposed in the school system, all of the external issues that are not related to the zoning board, is there a redress to grievance? Is there a process for the folks at home, or concerned citizens, or butters, to get those concerns addressed?
No. So again, you can't impose a requirement?
I wanted to answer that question. I wanted that out there publicly. I need the guy to know that.
Explain why. Because there's a principle in 40B that you can't impose a requirement on a 40B development that isn't imposed on some other type of project. So you could have a subdivision coming through the door, 10 housing units, and people are, the planning board can't turn the subdivision down because there's going to be kids living there. So you can't turn a 40B down because there's going to be kids living in the development. It's just, you can't impose requirements on a 40B that don't apply to any other type of development.
Even though it might put a stress on one of the town services?
If there is a physical infrastructure problem, you may be able to make a case that, how do I say this, of requiring some degree of mitigation that's reasonable in relation to the impact of the project. So, you know, a sidewalk, or, you know, a waterline improvement, not five miles of waterline improvement, but, you know, a waterline improvement that might be necessary to assure adequate fire flows. Those kinds of things are, public safety, public health, those are reasonable.
So, and let me ask you this. Regionally speaking, if we have four developments that come in, and they add 500 to 700 units regionally, and those regional people happen to live in Auburn, and they take school choice, and they fill six classrooms that we don't have, of four classrooms, out of those 700 units, I think it's fair to say there could be possibly 100 children?
But you can't, you can't hold a 40B developer in your town responsible for what may happen in some other community.
That's not another community, because right now in Auburn, we're going to have three or four developments. They're all going to be going to ours. So cumulatively, there'll be 500 to 600 units, let's just say, hypothetically speaking. Out of there, it's probably reasonable to say there's going to be 50 students, possibly, right?
Probably.
That could be three classrooms. What if hypothetically speaking, our school system is at capacity?
You cannot impose a requirement on a 40B that is not imposed on any other type of development.
Got it.
That's the answer.
And I'm asking that in several different questions in ways, and being pointed about it for purposes.
I understand that.
I'm not challenging you.
I know.
I just want to make sure that I'm repackaging it and giving it out there so we can all hear it a few different times.
I understand exactly what you're doing.
Thank you.
It's fine.
I just, just based off everything, I just want to clarify, the reason we're in this situation is because we're not even meeting the bare minimum, correct?
You're not at 10%.
Right.
Just figured, stated again.
No, yep, thank you.
Can I just ask a traffic question? And so traffic seems to be a hot ticket item with frankly, every project we do across the board, not just necessarily 40B. There is traffic studies that are done almost on all projects that come to us, you know, not an in-law, but bigger.
Sure.
Can you comment as to the feeling that the general public knows more than a traffic study that's done by a professional?
So that's why you need a peer review consultant to review the applicant's traffic I mean, sometimes conditions will come up, testimony will come up in a hearing on a 40B where residents of the area will say, I can't walk down that street now safely. That's an existing condition that the municipality, for whatever reason, has not rectified. You can't claim that on, you can't place that on the applicant. Now, that's not to say that you can't request reasonable mitigation for the project in the interests of public safety. You know, can you build a sidewalk from the development to the nearest public way? You know, if it's not five miles, you probably can do it, but you can't require the applicant to build a sidewalk to, you know, a mile away. And sometimes what comes up in these cases is, a developer will say, well, it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere, because where you want me to build the sidewalk to, there's no sidewalk connecting. So why would you do this? So there's other ways to think about those kinds of cases, which, you know, we can deal with if it comes up. But you just have to be, it's like all this, the framework, you'll save yourselves a lot of headache if the framework you operate from is, what can I reasonably do to enable this project to go forward and protect the people who are going to live in that development, as well as the our surrounding residents, our community as a whole?
Can you speak to buffer zones briefly? So I just want to give you, this is again a hypothetical. So we have, let's just say, for instance, we received feedback from the Conservation Commission that says, in this particular area, we recommend a three-layer buffer zone of short, medium, and tall local fauna to create a natural buffer between the height of these buildings and the butters. Is that something that's, if, that's considered reasonable, I'm assuming, correct?
The Conservation Commission's jurisdiction is under the State Wetlands Protection Act and a local wetlands bylaw. So their comments should be about wetland impacts.
Okay. So my question is, though, for buffers and wetland impacts, can we request particular ways that buffers are built?
Let me explain how this works. So the applicant is going to have to go to the Conservation Commission at some point, if there's wetlands. That's when the Conservation Commission imposes conditions on the project.
Okay.
Under its authority. Your authority is, they want waivers from the local wetlands bylaw. And what I would suggest is asking the Conservation Commission, which by the way, is really hard for them to do, like, look at these waivers the applicant's asking for. What's the deal breaker? Are there waivers that we probably are going to have to grant? Because if we don't, we're going to get superseded.
Hold on one second. Let her finish her statement, and then I'll let you speak.
Let me answer her question, because this is directly a point.
All right, go ahead.
All right, go ahead. Go to the microphone, please.
Yeah.
So gentlemen, I'm the chairman of the Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. Can you introduce yourself?
Michael Garland.
Thank you.
So I've been on the commission for almost 30 years, which means I'm a Glenn for Punishment. But we have, in order for an applicant to get a waiver from our, the 25-foot no-build zone, which typically applies, they have to do an alternatives analysis, and it can be pretty comprehensive. But as I, as I understand the presentation, that can be waived in order to, for the approval of the 40B. Am I right?
If it's a local wetlands requirement, not state.
Right.
Then yes, it's eligible for waiver at this level.
Right.
The applicant's still going to have to go to the Conservation Commission at some point.
Yep.
But not when the permit's here.
And, you know, we'll work with you on this, obviously.
Mr. Garland, so my understanding, and we covered this during our last meeting with the applicant, is that my understanding is that...
Again, we're speaking on hypotheticals here. We're not talking about...
You can't talk about specific.
Any buffers, we're just talking about golf course, whatever it might be.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. So we have the authority to waive on your behalf of your committee. So we need to work together.
Yes, absolutely.
Because of what they may be asking for.
Right.
And, could I?
I'm done.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I'm glad, I was actually pretty excited about having some Conservation Commission input at some point in this.
Me too.
So it's nice to have you here. Thank you.
Me too. Thank you very much. What helps is if your peer review consultant will look at that, too. If the case goes to the Housing Appeals Committee, and their job is to apply the statute and interpret an appeal through the intent of the law, which is to get housing built, the credibility of testimony is going to be, I hate to say it, greater from a professional outside consultant, even though with 30 years of experience, I bet you're a rock star.
We'll be as concerned all the same.
Yeah. But they need a consultant, because your review standards are different from theirs. So if the Conservation Commission has a concern about waiving something in the local bylaw, that's an example of a matter that I would refer to your peer review consultant and ask for input on. And you may not like the answer you're going to get, but you might as well know, because otherwise, it's going to, you're going to get challenged on this in a hearing anyway.
And the reason I ask that hypothetical is because I'm trying to think of, if we do have, I was working off the Mr. Maron's questions earlier about height restrictions.
Yeah.
So if we can't restrict height, can we request an appropriate buffer that would be a natural growth of...
That's a fairly common request. It's some type of vegetated buffer, unrelated to wetlands, but just good neighbor, you know.
Exactly. That's what I was looking for. Thank you so much. Okay.
I'm sorry if I didn't understand your question.
No, I probably didn't present it correctly, so thank you. At least I got to the answer I needed, so. Anyone else? Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir, go right ahead. Come on up. Please, we want to get it all out, too, so.
The waivers you say that these 40B developers come in, what do they ask? Is it above the standard of any other development as far as drainage, sewer, water, all that stuff?
Please use the microphone.
I thought he was actually close enough to it. I'm sorry if you didn't hear that, but can you get closer to the microphone, sir? I'm sorry.
Sure. I thought my voice would be loud enough. It usually is everywhere else in my life. My question was, the waivers that these 40B developers come in with, what are they? I mean, they have to meet town requirements and building requirements for roads, sewers, water, drainage.
Exactly. What you just listed, tying into town water and sewer?
And the waivers they're looking for. I mean, she mentioned a sidewalk to nowhere.
Everything from setbacks to height requirements.
Yep.
To, to permit, yes. I mean, a carp launch. They take a, they take, they take a carp launch at our bylaws and ask for waivers on anything that doesn't fit. In every category.
Because the statute allows them to.
Oh, no, allows you to, but I'm just curious what the most common waiver is that they're asking for, like a sidewalk to nowhere. If it's a development and it's development laying next to it, that sidewalk should go to the end of that development. Because when the next development comes, you can't say you got to go a mile, you've got 500 or 1,000 feet to go. So you build a sidewalk, there you go.
It's hard to say, in my view, because they're all unique applications, but some of the, some of the ones that we have seen repeatedly are height and setback requirements would probably be the most common.
I would agree with that. Yeah.
But, but it floats into, I mean, what was, what's interesting to learn, from my view, is, is that we now have authority to rule on waivers for other functional specialties in town. So we need to work with them to bring that forward, because we'll act on their authority, much as Mr. Garland had come up and said, and I'm thankful that he's here, but it's a matter of timing and working with them, because they're going to be asking for waivers that we don't have the expertise to weigh into.
Right. They ask for waivers on street lighting, that comes before the planning board, just after they're further us. My next question is, if, say the developing is 100 homes, 10% is 40B.
25%.
Or 25% 40B. What is the quality of the 40B houses compared to the other 75%?[1720.45] Or 25% 40B. What is the quality of the 40B houses compared to the other 75%? I mean, I know builders, they go as cheap as possible with anything, so it's a 40B house, they're expected to make this much profit. If I can make a little more and hide it somewhere, because I'm putting in low-quality cabinets, low-flooring, low-quality, this, that, and the other thing, where the person who's paying $250,000 more may, or may not, depending on the developer, get a better quality home.
That's an interesting point I never even thought of.
So, the policy is that the affordable units cannot be distinguishable from the outside. So, I'm trying to answer your question, sir.
No, I get it.
Okay. So, you know, the units have to be ostensibly the same, from the view from the road. As long as the interior construction complies with the building code, then those kinds of concessions or changes are allowed. Ironically, you find less variation in a rental development than you do in an ownership development. And the reason for that is, I'm a developer, I got 100 units of rental housing. I got to keep 25% of them for affordable units. Somebody in an affordable unit moves out, now I'm not at 25% anymore. So, you know, I got to somehow get a market rate unit the next time it opens up to be an affordable unit. So I got to make sure the units are the same inside. The rental developments are more likely to be the same inside than homeownership developments.
You know, I've never thought of the ques, it's a very interesting question.
It is.
And the mischievous side of me wants to answer it a certain way. I'll be very honest with you.
Same as me.
But from a, from a building perspective, you know, I, we have not seen anyone in our, in our purview, come up and propose that, you know, these units are going to get stainless steel, and these units are going to get white manna
Right, exactly, yeah.
that are scratch and dent. I mean, I understand the premise of the question, but I think just from a practicality standpoint, if you're putting, and I'm not a builder, but, but I know builders, if you're putting 100 units together, you're looking for 100 refrigerators all in the same quality, so that your drop can be easy and your process can be easier. So it's, likely it's going to be uniform. But it's a great question.
So you said, from the front, they often appear the same. So the facade of everything has to be the same, basically?
The units have to be indistinguishable from the outside.
Well, that's kind of subjective, because if you build a colonial, and you build a Kate next door, once affordable,
Right.
once not, they're distinguishable from each other because of the style of home.
The subsidizing agency reviews those more detailed plans before they grant final approval.
My other question would be square footage. Would that be relatively the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because of the property will vary in price. So, say, the regular housing is $800,000, affordable housing is 30% less, $240,000 less, okay, if you buy it. So how's that taxed? Is that taxed on, the town puts on an appraisal, even though they only pay $280,000 for it, or they get to appraise it at the $800,000?
So...
And the low-income person right back where they started.
The assessor has to assess the property based on its possible resale value, right? So if I'm in a market rate unit, the assessor's going to assess my property based on comparable sales. If I'm in an affordable unit, I can't expect to sell my property at that rate, even though I may have a house that just looks like a market rate house. I've got a restriction on my property, so the assessor has to adjust for taxes.
Okay. That makes sense. So, your question was, who's the subsidizing agency? Everybody in this room, and everybody who lives in this county's a subsidizing agency. It's all coming out of our wallets. Now, 40B and Section 8 are totally different things,
Oh, yeah.
but they're both subsidized homes, correct?
Chapter 40B projects may not have a, it's possible to have one that doesn't have a cash subsidy. The logic is that with the additional density that's granted, the project internally subsidizes the loss of rent or sale price from the affordable units. There are definitely subsidized developments as well, but not every 40B development has a subsidy tied to it, a cash subsidy.
Okay. I'm a little unclear on the, I'm a little unclear on the definition of safe harbors. Is that any town that has over 10%?
There's two ways to answer that.
Okay.
One is, are you over 10%? That's a statutory safe harbor. That's, don't worry about that. Another way to get to safe harbor is, you have a housing plan, and you are permitting new affordable units under it. So let's say you have a minimum requirement under your housing plan, your housing production plan, I'm just going to make up numbers for the sake of this. And if your, your minimum production requirement per year is 30 units. So if your Board of Appeals grants a comprehensive permit for a development that has at least 30 affordable units in it, then the town should ask DHCD, excuse me, I'm still calling them DHCD, the town should ask the state to certify production under that plan. And that will give you a year to not grant a comprehensive permit, because you are deemed to be producing units consistent with that plan. So that's the difference between approval and certification. They're very different.
So the subsidizing agency's going to, the state could also be federal?
Yeah, but under the, the way it works in Massachusetts, is there's a state agency that's always handling the PEL process.
My last question was, so the project's approved, it goes through all of them, bells and whistles, he's got a two-year window to do it, it's now month 21, he knows he's not going to finish, can he file for an extension on the permit?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. The applicant is allowed to come back and request an extension, and, you know, if it's a reasonable request, the board would grant it. I wouldn't grant a five-year waiver, but, you know, I mean, if it's a reasonable request, I mean, the construction industry's not doing all that great. I mean, is construction costs, extra permitting beyond 40B, any number of things can stop a project from going forward within that window within which the developer's supposed to get a building permit.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Because you brought up the money. So, when an applicant comes in for the development, he gets it all approved, he has to say, state what his percent is expected profit is.
To the subsidizing agency, they have to do that, yes.
Correct. So, say, to make numbers easy, his profits on a million-dollar job's going to be $200,000.
Okay.
Okay. So the price of his materials goes up, his profit margin shrinks. Is he allowable to raise the price on the homes to cover that percentage?
On the market rate, yes, but not the affordable units.
Okay. And then, in reverse, if it's a million dollars, and the price of all the materials go down, does his profit margin shrink?
The subsidizing agency will determine whether the project, whether the project is economic. If it's a healthy economy, the developer's probably going to make more money. If it's not a great economy, they're probably going to make less. But if they can make the project work, they'll build it. That's easy, I hate to be flip, but that's really the only way I can answer it.
Why not be? If you're being honest, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm trying to be.
Thank you.
No problem.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none? So far, so good? For you?
I'm fine.
All set? So I think, honestly, this is very enlightening to me, anyway. I think this is a fantastic training. I really want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Some great questions, too.
Thank you.
And this will also be available on the ACT TV, so if anybody at home, or who's not able to make it tonight, they can come and watch it again. So thank you very much for everybody coming. I appreciate your time. So have a great night.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Did it close, Bob, technically, since we opened up? Okay.